Please rise or entourage the leaders remain standing for the invocation.
The leaders of the United States of America into the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our planning commissioners, grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Andrea?
Here.
Rick?
Here.
Tracy?
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
Kevin?
Here.
Brian?
Here.
Nick?
Here.
Thank you. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from the January 10th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting?
I just have one addition. When we listed the goals and objectives for 2024, it was suggested that they be written as goals and objectives. So I provided a handout to everybody so that those goals and objectives are written more as goals and objectives. Now, what's the pleasure to the planning commission? We can add them to the minutes from February or January, or we can enter them in the minutes for February.
I would have to say they would be more appropriate here.
Yeah, in a February minute.
All right. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January 10th, 2024, as presented.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, has everyone had a chance to look over the correspondence? We have the Michigan Planner Magazine that has information, and then upcoming training on the back. Okay, we'll move on to public comments. Would anyone like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda tonight? Okay. Moving on, any late agenda items? Introduction. So I would like to introduce Christina, who is our new recording secretary.
Hey, everyone. We're together with me tonight.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you stepping up and taking this on, and we hope you stay a very long time. All right. First off, we're going to start the public hearing. Okay, we're going to open the public hearing at 7:03 PM. And this is going to be to discuss Jimmy's self-storage special land use 23-01. All right, all questions should be directed to the chair once someone is recognized. Okay, so we'll start with our planner.
Hey, everyone. So you may have seen already in your packets my letter addressing Jimmy's storage special land use request. There are a few outstanding items that I think the planning commission should look over along with the fact that this meets your standards for approval for the special land use. In the information requirements, there are no trash receptacles provided or screening methods. There's a, there's no, there's no, for the monument sign, there's a location provided, but there's no details regarding the signage, dimensions, along with that. Res zoning compliance issues regarding appearance, building of sub materials, some details included on sheet 10. However, building materials for storage unit doors and areas between each store are not included, so I'm not sure of the proposed materials and colors and appearance of the structure. Another item that's to be discussed is fencing. There are, there is fencing around the perimeter, however, it's chain link fences. And some of the, there's also this missing information regarding the details of fencing and other protective barriers. Once again, signage, there's a proposed sign, but no details. General parking and requirements regarding curbs, construction, I'm referred to the township engineer for that aspect of compliance. One of the major issues I've noted in this letter is the screening requirements. Screening required on all sides of this parcel for industrial parcels abutting AR districts. South property line, no screening existing or proposed. The west property line, areas of existing vegetative barriers, but there are no specific details about the vegetation, if that's, you know, a substantial means for screening. The north property line area of existing vegetative barriers, there's no specific details of that. In the east property line, no screening existing or proposed. Additional screening details are required for berms, the green belts, and general landscaping, and location of trash receptacles onsite. So there is a few outstanding issues. A couple of my concerns regarding trash receptacles, you know, knowing the nature of storage facilities, of folks moving things in and out. There tends to be debris left behind by current tenants and previous tenants, and having a method for managing that onsite so that it doesn't necessarily just cause a nuisance onsite, but also nuisance offsite with whether wind or rain, rain or drainage, runoff with debris. So there are a few outstanding items I think the planning commission should consider for this request.
Thank you. Cory?
Many of the comments I have in my, and I'm reading from my December 18th, 2023 letter. Many of the comments I have were mentioned by Alex, but what I'd like to talk about, I guess I need clarification from the applicant about the fencing. I did notice that there is fencing around the perimeter of the retention pond. However, there's a gate. I noted on the entrance to Van Dyke, it doesn't appear on the plans I have, and I know there've been some iterations after that, that the site itself will be secured with fencing. And then we also have concerns with landscaping, as mentioned by Alex. And not on top of the landscaping of using the existing vegetation, the grading plan indicates some significant grading in the area of the existing vegetation that remain on the west side of the north property line. So we're concerned with how that will be maintained with the proposed grades that are shown. And then the regard regarding the stormwater, the applicant's proposing a stormwater retention pond. Based on the soil bores of a retention pond, based on the soil bores, retention pond percolation into the soil may be permitted. However, the seasonal water table soil mineral level is not shown. They did provide additional information that indicates that. We just want to make it clear to the applicant that should it be during construction with retention pond, they're very specific. If that material's not there, it's not the same material, then an alternate would have to come about as far as a detention or something with an outlet. The retention area must be fenced to provide a secure perimeter. The fence has been added, however, the fence location must be revised and include adequate space for maintenance and access. Currently, it's located at the top of the retention pond. So concern is if you have to get in there and do maintenance, clean out debris, clean out brush, you know, and I really have a staging area around the perimeter of that. And then just general comments, a permit shall be required from the road permission, MDOT, soil erosion, the standard permitting. So in summary of the letter that review that we did, our concerns are one, security of the site, being that there's just, for plans that we have, again, a gate on the proposed entrance on Van Dyke, there's not a gate on the entrance to Dryden. It doesn't appear that the site itself is fenced. Then, as Alex mentioned, screening is important because it is required because of the adjacent residential zoning. They do provide a single row of evergreen trees. Typically, in the past, township has seen either a berm or a staggered evergreen trees, a double row, or a single row on top of a berm, some of the things that we've seen in the past. But those are something that we are, is required, green belts, is something the planning commission can look at.
Thank you.
And Jerry, I also want to add to my report.
Yes.
The special land use standards you should receive as well. The, in this, in all special land use cases, the planning commission must find that the applicant has met all of the standards in section 503, A, B, C, and D. If for any reason that one of the standards is not met, the special land use would not be approved.
Thank you. Okay, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself for Jimmy's storage.
Hi, my name's Sam Sabah. My brother can't be here today, so I'm representing both of us.
Okay.
Yeah, Tim Eadie with Schink Engineering.
Hi, I'm Laura Schink with Schink Engineering.
Thank you. Okay, so you heard all of the comments. Do you have some information to help us?
We do.
All right.
Wait, so let's start with fencing, okay? So I was talking to Sam, and I believe Sam said he would like to fence in this entire face. So phase one, we would like to fence that in at this time. And we can add that to the plan. It's not a problem.
Yeah. And fencing is required as part of the ordinance.
That's what we were.
In the fencing around the retention pond?
In the revised plans, which I believe you all have, it has been moved approximately 14 feet outside the top. It's available on page three and a little more visible on page four.
Yeah, I feel like you, Alex and Paul, you may not have the most recent plans, just from some of the comments that you made, but that's okay.
I don't think on this, we don't, does not show that change.
Really?
On the ones that we have.
I can share with Dennis. Do you want to look at these?
Yeah, I think.
I have an extra full-size set, too.
So what was the plan set to see?
What are the dates of the plan? I've got November 30th, 2023. That's the plan we've got.
I have this on February 6th.
Yeah, that's 31st. I'm looking at the page.
Yeah, that's. Oh, right, right. These are objects. This one's February 6th. Oh.
November.
November 30th, 23 revised for planning review.
This was dated February 6th.
That's received, but then our date was right there.
Oh, yeah, February, or November 30th.
Does that have?
Is that what you have, Cory?
No, I don't.
We all seem to have November 30th.
Yeah, that has the fence.
Yeah, it's right at the top.
If you take a look at page three and four, though, I mean, it should show at least the fence in the right location. We may have missed the revision date, but you're talking about phase two on the north side.
Is that what it is? No, it's Sam. Why didn't you say it was 16 feet?
Yeah. I've got the gate over there. Yeah.
It is 14 feet.
It might be 12, but I thought it was 14.
We'll all check it. Either way.
Yeah. But I guess these are the plans according to that.
Okay, so fencing, we will fence in phase one and we'll fence in the pond.
Yeah.
And so, okay, so both of those things, and we'll make sure we have the appropriate distance from the top of the pond, on the ponds, okay? The landscaping, I think, and Tim was working on that. I think there was some confusion.
Yeah, the green, the green belts certainly do not require a berm per ordinance. It just requires screening. 12 foot on center is required without, with a single row, and it's pine trees, it's not narrow pines. We're specifying fir pine, I don't remember the exact species, but we're actually specifying what species. They're, you know, typical pine trees, not a narrow pine like a, like an arborvitae or something like that.
And then we also provided to Ida photographs of the existing vegetation out there so you could see. So you could see what existing vegetation is, and there's a 40-foot setback.
Yeah.
That, that would have been disturbed.
Yeah, we've got a 40-foot setback on the north and west. 80 foot on the west, 40 foot on the north, I believe between the paving and the property line. We've got 80 from the property line of the building, and then 24 feet worth of paving, and then a ditch. And the existing, you know, to the north is, it's trees, it's wood, it's wooded area. That little area to the west is brush entries, the typical brush row.
There's no, there's no plan to approve that, just to let it grow wild.
Only if required.
I mean, the thought was to leave it natural.
Yeah.
We want to try to get the most screening to protect our residential area, so we want to have that as much as possible. That's really important to people living around here. They don't want to see it. They.
We're talking about a pretty small area. The areas to the north is actually planned as future industrial anyway. It is currently zoned ag, but it's anticipated it will become industrial, given its location and the surrounding zoning now.
North of that is that, that's still Elmont Township, correct?
It is.
It's all Elmont Township, yes.
So you're saying that our master plan is saying it's going to be industrial?
Yes. That entire mile is entirely, is planned to be industrial. In fact, the lot north of the one vacant lot is already industrial. It's all fronted on Van Dyke.
You said you were going to keep the brush. How are, are you going to be doing construction? And is that brush going to get disturbed, or is that going to stay growing?
Your construction is like 60 feet away from.
60 feet away?
Yeah, approximately.
Okay.
And we've got an 80-foot setback, so yeah, it's pretty substantial between us and the actual property line. As far as screening on the east and south sides, that is right of way. The ordinance is a little, I mean, I guess typically that wouldn't be the same standards. Usually there's a separate standard for fronting a roadway.
So we're trying to get, we're trying to get trees and things in the roadway to naturally slow it down, so.
Yeah.
The more it comes in, so. All right.
Well, you've got residential.
On the south side, yes.
South side.
It's supporting to residential.
Okay, trash receptacle?
Actually, you did, I guess.
Yeah, you.
We can certainly, yeah, we can certainly add it. We worked with a consultant on this, and having a trash receptacle in storage units is actually, it's a bit of a liability. Because, you know, you never know what a customer's going to put in there at any given time. Most storage units don't have them behind the fence.
I mean, if you guys are really not wanting to, I'd want you to, if you'd want to have the discussion before, before we add it.
When they don't pay the bill, they just keep everything in, and then we got to clean it out. You know what I mean? So.
So you would just bring your chalk and put it in your truck?
Somebody will have a company come just clean it all up.
We just, we.
Friends that have them, that's what they do.
Yeah, we just want to keep it clean around here. We want our town to stay nice.
I mean, I don't know if you've seen our business at the mall where we're clean all the time, so we're right across the street. You know, we'll be there all the time. It's not like we're.
It's actually clean.
We're not going to be around, think. We're not, you know, it's like, we're not going to be around.
Area, dumpsters too, right there.
Yeah, dumpsters area, we have people throw stuff everywhere outside, man. It's dirty.
Right, a lot of times it just doesn't really make it to the dumpster.
Yeah. But whatever, you know, whatever we got to do.
I could add a little bit to it. With the many stories, I do, it's not a written rule. They do have, sometimes they have dumpsters, sometimes they don't. Generally, they're outside the fence or an attended, attended where there's a tenant there all the time. But I've seen quite a few where they are not and present, but that'd be something the planning commission would have to waive if they do not see the need, or they'd have to demonstrate how trash will be taken care of. In regards to landscaping or the screening, they're correct to the north. I believe that property, I'm not sure the entirety, but most of that property is master planned for industrial or non-residential. But a clarification on what was mentioned is they're 80 feet away from the buildings, but with the grading, my concern in the letter was you're getting within about 25 feet of the property line where they're matching back into the grade. So that area will be cleared, and that's where kind of the confusion where it shows a pretty wide swath of existing vegetation, you know, 30 to 35 feet. Not knowing the limits of where that's going, it could easily knock that in half. So that was my concern along the north property line. The west, the west line towards the back, they do have 80 feet roughly from the paving, and they're not really doing any rough grading through there. Primary concern is the residential that's current along the Dryden Road frontage to the west, and while it's not immediately across the street, it is being built as you progress immediately from this point to the west, and that is for residential. So I think those are the, you know, concern, primary concerns. I believe there can be some, something to the north, but again, that's, with a green belt, it's not a requirement for a berm, but that's, a green belt is specific on a minimum, planning commission can interpret what screening is, whether it's screen fencing, whether it's a berm, whether it's whatever level of trees or walls.
We knew that coming into this meeting, so that's why we knew that you guys can answer.
What is, just clarification was brought up, what is the phasing plan? I know there's two phases, but what's, what's the plan? Because what you're here?
Page three, it's really clear on page three.
Well, the limits, so what's the anticipated timeline for the phasing? Because if you're going to phase the entirety of?
There is no anticipated timeline. It's really how well for phase one goes. Phase two may end up in something entirely different in the future. But it is the detention and pipe sizing is all, is all size for both phases.
And it's clearly showing what's phase one and phase two. It's just the timing of it. When you indicate that you're going to, does phase, so is phase one only the drive off of Van Dyke? There won't be a second point access off of Dryden?
Correct.
And then all of phase one, what you're saying tonight is proposed to be fenced, so security fencing and the gate?
Yeah, yes.
Good.
And there is no timing. It's, it's kind of a build it and see how phase one goes before deciding on phase two.
Cory, was the gate back far enough off of Van Dyke if several cars were coming in at the same time?
I don't know if that's been revised on the current set or if it's where it was before. Concern was with the gate being there. If two cars come in, they're sitting on Van Dyke. So there really isn't a queue for vehicles if there, if there happen to be more than two there, or two really puts their tail end right at the curb cut, so.
We'll have to double check. We'll make sure that there's enough for two cars.
Good.
I remember talking about it, so I'm pretty sure it probably got changed. I'm not sure that you guys had most recent.
Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? All right.
On the south side?
The gate is approximately 70 feet off of the existing asphalt. So there's even more than a room for. It's approximately, approximately 70.
That may be different than what I have here.
The gate? I don't think the location will change, but.
The concern would be the queuing. If you have a vehicle with a trailer, and then another vehicle's behind it, you're at your 70 feet. And that's just two vehicles, one with a trailer on that. So there is room here to move it, as far as moving it off the queue without impacting what you do.
How far would we have it off?
I estimate about 70 feet.
Oh, and how far would you like it off?
Well, you have to provide, I mean, there really is a number, but you provide adequate, adequate length for a couple trailers and a vehicle, and something to get in. And there's, there's plenty of room, it looks like, to move it back here where it doesn't impact what you're doing.
Okay. So on the screening on the south side, since we're not constructing phase two at the moment, and we are going to fence that in, would slats in the fence be acceptable to, on the south side?
That'd be something that they would have to, to review. If that's, if that's the proposal for the screen, that's something the planning commission can consider.
Is that on here, the slats and fence? Is that what you?
No, no, just because before we weren't sure we were going to fence in the, phase one, and now that we've decided that that's the plan.
It's probably better for security and for everything.
Okay, okay, great. And then you guys were requesting screening to the south, so my thought was because it's slats in the fence. Unless you want something else. Right now for phase one, okay? And then when phase two is constructed, I don't know if you would want maybe some trees down there, or, you know, he'd have to put up.
We always want trees.
So maybe that could be part of phase two then, do you know what I mean? Because then the development will be closer to the road.
Yeah, it's about 600, phase one is about 600 feet off the road.
Is your information about the facade, what is the proposed building colors? Do you have that?
Black, gray, gray with black doors or black with gray doors? It was one of the two.
It was.
It is actually on.
Gray with, gray with black doors and a black road.
Okay.
Building one can be constructed with a faux brick. It's just between the doors, it's.
Because building one is facing the road.
Yeah.
It's the closest building to the road. So if you want that one fancier, then we could put the faux brick between the doors.
That's, we would always like that as well.
It's just a different paint job, but yes. And that detail was updated, I believe, on page seven?
Page seven?
It is, yeah. It's the detail sheet, it's a 10.
It might, it might be page 10.
It's at the top of sheet 10.
It's 10.
Okay. We ended it.
Oh, and we know the sign out front was mentioned, that we showed it on the plans. That is, it's a completely separate application for the monument sign. It's usually, the details for that are usually provided by the sign company. We did show the location, though. It is recommended in the. No, it's just.
Did you find, Andrea, worthy, it talked about the facade on there, on sheet 10?
Oh, yeah, that's good.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Any questions, Dennis? Is there any public comments? Okay, we're going to close the public portion of the meeting at 7:29. Do you have any, does anyone have any questions for the applicants?
I've got quite a few.
Okay, Dennis?
The management of the water, I didn't see any complaints, Cory, in my looking at that, because that's. I didn't see any complaints, Corey, in my looking at that was, that's an exceptional job to maintain water without my hard surfaces. I mean, everything's hard surface.
That was a lot of work, yes.
Yeah. But I do have a number of challenges for you. So on drawing three, you marked the Van Dyke Road right away at 120 feet.
Yes.
And then you have 70 foot right away marked on the ground from the center line of Van Dyke. There's a 10 foot discrepancy there, I think, you need to take a look at that.
Pages that?
Three.
Page three, top of the page. So your setback is 70 feet, setback on the drawing, 70 feet from the center line. Okay, so there's 10 feet in there somewhere, unless the road right away is more than 120. Corey, is it 120 for that area?
It varies a little bit, but it's predominantly 120 through that area.
Okay, so.
There are spots where it does go to 140 to 150, but I believe it's 120 through there.
Yeah. 140 and so, I'm sorry, it's 50 on one side of the road and 70 on our side of the road.
Oh, it is?
Yes. The M, the M dot roads are like that.
That's good, then the drawings.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, actually had to look at it to remember, sorry.
Now, the other challenge I have, you don't have permits from M dot or the county for either access to the site.
We were waiting for approval tonight and then we're going to apply.
Correct, yeah, that's typically the first step.
This is what's hard for me to understand because they might move your road, might move your access. You're about 720 feet from this intersection?
Yes.
For the Van Dyke access?
Yeah.
So I, I don't know if that's going to have a negative impact on what you've already done. If they move that access.
M dot, M dot details indicate about 250 feet is where they want to keep clear access.
Okay.
Beyond that.
But it would be nice.
We don't anticipate any issue.
That's.
Takes a lot longer to get an M dot approval.
Roger.
Does a township approval, yeah. And then the, the Dryden access is, it's designed to, the county standards, there shouldn't be any issue with that one either.
Now, you've talked about fencing, okay, now we're only talking about phase one, right? Phase two is to be determined by.
I think the site plan includes for the whole thing, but we're only doing phase one.
As far as permitting, yeah.
Oh, okay, so special land use and a site plan is for phase one and two.
Yes.
Right, because the entire site is indoor. All that they're saying.
Building permits would only be phase one.
You bet. Fire chief, look at this. You have fire lanes at 56 feet?
Yes, sir.
Is that your requirement?
No, no, fire lanes are typically only required to be about 16 feet clear of it.
Okay.
56 feet actually provides the diameter for a fire truck to do a complete U-turn.
Comments on the lighting, page three shows the lighting on the buildings. Page four, which is phase one, does not show the lighting on buildings. That's a house clean.
It, it's a detail that would apply to every building.
Okay.
Every single building, yeah.
I assume so. So in page, I think it's 10, you show the lighting detail, or the lighter, the lights?
Yes.
Page six. Page six.
Page six, sorry.
Page six, okay, so when I go to page 10, okay, so we need the intensity of that. And I'm not clear on your elevation drawing on page 10. Now, these buildings, it's marked eight foot four inches.
Correct, sir.
That's the height of the building?
Yes.
That's, that's when I used the scale on there, that I measured 13 feet. It's one and 20, one inch is 20 inches.
Those were provided by Trakey. They're actually the suppliers for most of the storage units in, in southeast Michigan.
So how high are the lights?
If the. Maybe it's just above the door, yeah.
So we need intensity in that too, because you are ag residential all around. That's all. The drawing, I mean, the scale is marked and I measured that.
They were, they were provided by the, by the manufacturer.
So is the scale wrong on that?
If that, if, if there's an issue with that, then yes, it would be an issue with the drawings that were provided to us, yes.
Clarify with the dimension on it, the dimensions would govern the scale. So if we look at this and it was approved in it, eight foot four inches would have scaled differently, the eight foot four inches would rule, so that would be, I'd recommend that to be the focus is the, is the dimension they give you, because they can, these are renderings a lot of times and they can, the door may not be quite where it's shown, might be a little bit lower. Eight foot four will be the dimension that, that governs it, just like on the exterior of the buildings, they give the dimensions of the 50 feet by, it's hard to read it, the one, 150 and one over 180, I'm not sure. Those dimensions are what will govern. They couldn't come in with a 60 by 200 in that area, they couldn't come in with a 14 foot high building because plans clearly show that. So I, I agree with the scale when I look at it and the review and the basically what's enforcement is, is the dimensions that's shown on it. And then when they submit for a building permit, then everything's right on scale because that's something to look at there.
So this is a company that provides these buildings?
Yes.
The steel.
Yeah, and all the buildings are different sizes and widths, you know.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
Are they all like garage type door?
Yes. Yeah, an overhead door, yeah. They're, they're designed a little differently, the way they, they coil in on themselves, they don't actually have a spring.
Oh.
They're lighter weight.
You know, trash receptacles? And that is a challenge, but I, I'm certainly supporting a trash, trash receptacle.
Would want one?
Yeah.
A simple privacy fence around it.
You know, the ordinance is pretty clear.
It's kinda clear, it doesn't actually specify exactly what you guys want.
If.
I mean, typical is, you know, a, a, you know, 10 by 20 concrete pad, 10 by 10 is the dumpster with a privacy fence around it.
I think you're going to have a lot of people that vacate these things, they're going to look for something to leave the trash. Like you said, you're.
Yeah, the, the liability is what they might throw in there when they vacate.
Right. Your notes on page three relative to combustible materials, explosives. And you reference a fire prevention code, toxic materials, no storage outside of the buildings and no doing mechanical work outside of them. How do you police that? Is that an lease agreement that you guys would write with people that rent these storage facilities? I mean, I don't, it's not clear to me whether you, this is a manned facility, it's 24/7 access to, for your customers, but you don't necessarily have somebody on top of it.
No, nobody's going to be there.
Okay.
At, at the gate at all, so it's going to be unmanned, but like I said, we're there.
I like your notes on the drawings, but.
It is on our, it is on our system, it is on our system, but that's a, that's a pretty standard contract. I, I have, I actually own my own, I have my own storage unit, so, yeah, it was, it was on the rental agreement I had, so.
Okay, did you make a copy of that for our records for the township at some point?
Yeah, we'd probably make something like that available, yeah.
What you're saying, great, thank you. I'm not understanding your electric, you got a transformer near building seven.
Yes.
So where's the power coming into the site and how is it distributed to the buildings?
It would come from the, the nearest pole, which is, is relatively close to, it's, but it's like 500 feet off of Dryden Road.
Okay.
Couple hundred, a hundred or so feet south there, that's where we anticipate our power would come from for phase one. During phase two, there would definitely be some rerouting of power, but that's normally going to be, you know, something Detroit Edison actually has to plan. It's not something we can tell them they have to do or how they want to do it.
Is it underground or is it going to be?
It's currently overhead, I imagine they would probably want to do underground, I'm guessing they would reroute it towards the right away and around. But again, that's something we would have to work with a Detroit Edison planner with.
Is that something that should be on the drawing, Corey?
You have to show a general location of it and whether it's, you can determine whether it's above ground or underground.
What about the buildings?
Typically, it's not a, you show a feed to each building. That is something that's dealt with either through building department or directly through Edison. You show the feed to the development and then from there, it's typically not individual services to each.
Any thoughts about being underground or above ground or how you guys?
We anticipate underground. Underground could create too many, or above ground would create too many issues, especially with the height of the buildings and just the height of a standard U-Haul truck.
These are typically all underground because you have to be so far from a roof of a structure and.
I like it, I like it underground, to be honest with you, that's a lot of wire hanging around. So you identified a mechanical caretaker, is that building one on the edge there, that 20 foot?
Yes, sir. It's, it's probably going to be smaller than what's shown on the plan, but it's, it's really just enough for a mechanical room. It's realistically, it's the only reason we have any dedicated parking spaces shown. For this type of thing, we wouldn't need anything, any type of parking.
I guess we beat up the screening and all that stuff that Alex.
I'm a little concerned about, as Rick pointed out, the south side screening, but I, I don't, I don't know that the slats are.
Only for phase one.
Right, it's, it's.
We, we have no problem adding trees for phase two, but given the distance off of Dryden Road it and the, and the fact that it's a phase line.
The fence is going to move from phase one to phase two?
A fence would be removed, yes.
So it's going to move closer to the road?
It would be re-fenced.
Yes.
To accomplish phase two.
Yes.
At phase one altogether.
I'm chairman, so section seven, one, two, seven, two, just says there's two requirements. Where are the construction of any district but the fountains of less intense districts such as AR districts? Existing residential use parcel, that's another example too. Shall now be approved unless a green belt decorative masonry wall or landscape burn is provided between two uses, it needs a requirement specified in that section 7.2 regarding 7.2 A walls, 7.2 B burn, 7.2 C green belts.
Those are, those are all ors. Those are all ors, not and. Green belt or.
Fencing with slats and that does not qualify under the screen requirements, the decorative masonry wall, landscape, never hurts.
Yeah.
Would you want a time limit if there was a time limit between phase one was constructed and phase two? Few years, five years, something like that, to then we would put the, the, the trees up?
On the south side.
On the, on the south side there, just because phase one is, like I said, it's about 600 feet off the road. I guess that would be up to you guys to determine what's appropriate on a, on a phase line.
As I, if, we came here with a phase one and a phase two and you're well within the right to ask for the approval of both phases, but no way to explain they're going to construct phase one with an undetermined timeline on the phase two. Typically, you do put a timeline on it, it's not restrictive, but ordinances change, requirements change. So if it is something that goes out 10 years, it's difficult to come back in 10 years from now and say it. Not uncommon to be five years from now, something like that. But as far as a, a phased, and that's part of my, I guess, misunderstanding or lack of understanding when I did the review is that if there's a phase one, it's going to be substantial in the phase two. Typically, all of the screening is done on first phase, everywhere for the project. Now, if they want to propose something where a phase one is a screening and a phase two, I recommend that clearly be shown for review, this is what we want to do for it. If it's going to be, you know, going to be some kind of, something different, temporary burn or something that's across the property here, because you know you're going to have to do land balancing in phase two and that burn can be moved to a phase two burn, that's fine, but I think that needs to be clearly shown if they're, if, what they're proposing to do as far as landscaping, because typically on all phase projects that we've done in the past, and I've been here close to 20 years now, it's kind of scary, but the phasing, the landscaping, the screening has been done from day one because there's improvements to the project. Unless it's a very clear, we're going to do phase one, everything on phase one is screened, phase two, everything on phase two is screened. And this, and this doesn't really show that and that's my, it was my lack of understanding how that was going to be done. If this is being requested, because their engineering does cover the entire site for stormwater, for drainage, for all of that. But I just want to mention that if that's the case, typically we require all the landscaping to be done right now. And if there is a plan, we can screen it by doing this and the planning commission allows it, like Alex said, typically the, the slats are an add-on. They have been on, you see, there were quite a few of them down the Van Dyke corridor and those have been an add-on on top of something where they, so yeah, we'll, we'll screen because we don't want any concerns with them. But that, that'd be my only talk about the, the landscape is that I think that has to be very clearly defined, as well, they mentioned the fencing tonight, but the fencing for phase one, then phase two would be fenced with the gate at the, the Dryden Road, those type of details would be shown. So if you don't show it, then our recommendation would be, well, go through with phase one, you'll come back for phase two. And it's whether you're right to do that or you can ask for approval of the whole thing.
So can we agree tonight what we are going to do? Have the information on your house?
I think, I think the, because ultimately like, like Alex read in there, there's different options you can do. And if the, you know, I think it's, would help you out, if the planning commission is in favor or what we've typically done in the past, which has been berms, a landscape burn is very common, you know, you look at the, depending on, you may propose a certain height and I don't recommend that they say, yeah, we want this height, it depends on your contours and where you're at. But if you propose a burn, because the trees you propose in there are larger than the, the minimal, they're an eight foot high, I think the minimal is five or six, I think six foot.
For the type eight, eight's, eight's, eight's what's required.
So.
And it'll create a good barrier within the five year timeframe.
And with that, if that's what they propose, that's what you propose, they can review that, if it's a burn, because I know in some areas you have a burn, if the trees are on top of the burn and it's a little more screen, that's even better.
The burn just seemed inadequate because it's only requires a three foot high burn, which is just, it's nowhere near adequate for this type of site.
Requirements are one thing, proposals are another.
Exactly.
So requirements are minimal.
Yep, and we do actually have, the landscape plan is phased along with the rest of it.
And I noticed most of that was phase, was phase two.
A lot of it was phase two where it wraps, you know, where it obviously, it, where phase two construction would obviously be a visual nuisance to residential.
And so just to clarify, our recommendation would be all the landscaping, it's been historical in the township, all landscaping's done at one time. Because then it's very difficult to come back six years from now and have somebody go back and basically police the construction on, well, these trees are here and you had to more trees here and what happens generally is you, you plant the trees now and they're, they're basically have to stay in perpetuity, so even first year or two, about, you know, portion of them die, you replace them, you go forward. So that's, that's the standard and then you can evaluate that. Part of it, because there's a special land use, if the screen's inadequate, you come back to do phase two, that can be looked at at that time. Typically, it's not if everything goes as planned.
So basically, part of the initial construction, you'd want the landscape we have proposed all as part of phase one. What about the, the south and east sides? Those are both road frontages, I'm not entirely sure what the planning commission would want there.
Again, per, per ordinance, it's screen, it's a green bill.
Green bill.
Now, the planning commission, they have those different options they can look at. That, that is a green bill area, even though it's road frontage, but they actually, the way they're, they're done, the property goes to center of the road and next property starts there, so technically it's commercial, industrial versus ag residential.
Yeah. East side is all commercial, it's, I think.
South side is residential.
The south side's residential, I don't, the east side is all commercial, it's, I do believe it is a lower intensity commercial, but it is all proposed as industrial across the street, so.
Not to the south.
No, no, we were talking about to the east.
To the east, to the east, that's the south. I think that someone, I just don't have a map on the wall, that's an existing right there.
So, so the future land use map shows the lot to the north?
Yes, as industrial.
Yeah. As future use, it's currently ag residential.
Yes.
We have to protect it as that.
I guess we're, I guess I'd like to figure out exactly what you guys would like to see on the, on the landscape plan as.
Okay.
Additional.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the applicants? All right.
Do we have a do we have a photometric plan? I mean, we have details for the lighting, but what about the light spillage? That's been an ongoing thing with all of these sites that brought to industrial, to residential.
Recommend no, through no indication to this applicant, lighting is a major issue in our township. Predates you by 10, 12 years at least, but it's been an ongoing issue for light. So that's not that's not an issue that's special to this site, it's just it's a commercial. Yeah, basically, it's it's zero at the property line downward downward shielded, which these are.
So yeah, it's all.
So with this light fixture, they're very common, so it should not be hard to put one together.
No.
And the spillage with these in between buildings really is not a concern, it's going out from the buildings. So yeah, this those light fixtures are very basic as far as putting photometrics together. It's not an elevated, elevated pole with different LED lighting fixtures, so.
So we will provide you with a photometric. And then, I'm sorry to go back to this, but did you have a preference on the type of landscaping provided? We will add that to the plan, but.
So so after we're done, we'll deliberate, and then we'll we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much. Any discussion with the board?
Oh, I guess. There's a, I think there's a lot of questions that need to be addressed by the applicant. So if there's no other, I'm going to postpone on special land use application 2301. Jimmy's storage site plan dated November 30th, 2023. To allow the applicant time to address the issues discussed and include the M.D. for 53. Access to Dryden Road from the Fair County Road Commission. How much coordinates is under Article 2, Section 2.4, appearances of the buildings of the sites. Section 2.11 on the fence walls and the berms and the protective barriers. Article 4, Section 42B10E, exterior lighting requirements. Section 42B10F, trash receptacle. Section 42B10K, green belt requirements. And then Article 7 on screening requirements. Section 72B on berms and sections and green belts and general landscape requirements. And I'd like to reference. Davis Land Surveying Engineering Review of December 18th, 2023. And Rural Professional Services Company review dated 21 November 2023. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Could we have a roll call vote, please? Any discussion?
I agree, obviously, with my support, but as far as like the screening and all that, we don't know if this is. Phase one versus phase two, phase two may never happen, like I agree with Cory, it needs to, we need to identify that. Lay it all out and take care of it in phase one. And then if it grows to a phase two, that the screening then grows, we do, we need to protect that east side and the south side for sure. Well, it was my understanding if we approve this, we're approving phase one and phase two according to the site.
The way this is presented to us tonight, yes.
Yeah, okay.
So if they do choose to do a phase one, it's fine, but. The applicant is to demonstrate that they're meeting your standards, it's not what you guys want, they're demonstrating. Zoning requirements are items that I have to review without discretion. It's what your zoning ordinance requires, I have to review that. It's the discretion of the planning commission, not me, that determines whether certain items are necessary or not necessary. In the interest of public health, safety, and welfare of the community. In addition to that, this is also a special land use, so there's qualitative requirements that the planning commission needs to. Review and approve. So generally speaking, some communities review special land use, approve or disapprove, and then make a decision based on. Site plan, so I think you have. Special land use review, I'm not sure if you have that, that was provided with for you, so. You know, the thing is, is if the applicant does, and just to. To to add to Rick and Dennis's comments is. If the applicant decides to do phase one, and a time of five years passes by, and they want to. Approve something, if they never approve phase two, then all of what would be then phase two would have to be reviewed under the. Zoning ordinance at that time, maybe the same, maybe different, so it's going to perhaps add a layer. Of of the logistical challenges, I guess is the best I can say, so. Like I said, the applicant has to demonstrate how they're going to mitigate about about the the use of a special land use of a. Of industrial use surrounded by industrial, I mean agricultural, residential properties for most apartments.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Also, I didn't see any notes as far as like typically on our special land use, we have hours of operation, things like that. If it's intended to be 24 hours, it needs to be indicated on there. I'm not sure that that's going to be acceptable next to residential.
I think that's indicated on page.
Page three?
24, 7 access.
Okay, yeah, I see it on there. So it is it is 24 hours, seven days a week. So. That being headed butts, you know, the residential to the east, or I'm sorry, to the west, is that going to be acceptable? You can have cars, trucks pulling in, driving around, headlights, that kind of thing. It's one of the challenges of putting industrial next to residential.
I think probably while we're in the site and screening someone, I think.
Screening and the the green belt, it really has to address that.
All right, any more discussion?
If a landscape company or whatever decides to run their, you know, run their business out of one of the stalls, and they show up at 5:00 in the morning, they're making noise, loading the trucks and all that, is that acceptable to the homes to the to the west? That's a prohibited use at that site, so hours of operations of that type of use has to be reviewed, that's a separate use. I understand that could occur, that would be in violation of the site plan. It's going to, Alex.
Any other comments? Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Andrea?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Tracy?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Nick?
Motion passes.
Now, one more question or clarification for the applicant is the the screening and not saying what, how much screening, what type of screening the township typically. Reviews, and in my experience, the townships typically have the berm, a landscape berm, a certificate enough for blocking the headlights and traditional screening. So I I that's what's been meant historically, is like I said, there's different things you can have, complete screening walls and different things. What they're asking for is some direction and not specific, because we we can't get specifics for the type of. Something that would be favorable to the township if it meets the requirements we come in.
I I think with 24-hour access, that it would probably be best to see something that would give immediate. Screening, not, you know, 10 years from now, as things mature, because you're not waiting. You know, 10 years from now for this site to be used, to me at least, that's.
Yeah, I'm all I'm all for like waiving any kind of masonry or anything like that as requirements, just way too costly. You know, a berm.
It really doesn't look nice. No, no, I I wasn't saying, just whatever it is, is. Needs to be, if they're going to be in there 24 hours a day, it needs to be doing its job from the day it opens.
Agreed. So to answer that, that's that's in section seven, it's in section 7.2, 7.3. The applicant needs to demonstrate how they're going to mitigate against that by use of walls, berms, or landscaping, green belts. And that, our apartments, general landscape requirements provided there, that specific breeds, height installation, all that's in there, so. The applicant's required to follow the provisions of those other ordinance.
Chair, you guys also postponed the decision of special land use, too, I believe you're correct.
Special land use and the site plan.
Any any more comments about the screening from the commissioners? I would be interested in a berm, trees, I like a green belt, I think that's that's the way our town, our our community wants to go.
Do they have any questions?
Do you have questions?
I'm assuming that we will, I don't think you will send us. The notes or the letters stating, are there specific ordinance that you that you, Dennis, referenced, that everyone else referenced, right?
Yeah. We we had some specific questions that weren't really answered, like is the existing vegetation to the north, is that acceptable? Because there's really no way to even build a berm there. So it's not even possible.
Chair, may I ask, I mean, this question directed to you, but they're charged to us, but it's to be you, but. The applicant is to demonstrate if they're going to use berms, landscaping, or walls. It's not one or the other, it's what they can choose from that.
Okay.
And that based upon their decision of how they're going to, now they're required to, because that's an AR district above. That's the current use, that's what's there, they're budding AR. So with that being said, the applicant is going to have to demonstrate how they're going to mitigate. The negative impacts of traffic of the use to adjacent lesser intense uses. And that is to be determined in the special land use, and those qualitative measures are explicitly outlined in the special land use standards. So the the use cannot occur without both approval of the site plan and approval of the special land use. So the the planning commission will make a decision on both. Either of those standards fail, they 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 run together, they're not. They're they're tied together, so. This is a special land use.
Yeah, and that that's the question for you guys, is the existing vegetation on the north side, is that enough? Or do you guys want the roll of pine trees?
So the applicant needs to demonstrate what's there on the site, and if that's sufficient. If that meets the standards of the zoning ordinance of species, height, the location of them. That it's for them to demonstrate that that's that's sufficient or not, and that would be to the discretion of the planning commission, if that meets your standards.
And so clarification, typically what that's done is there is a, maybe not a complete detailed inventory, but it's very clear that there are this many trees along this, because I know you submitted pictures, with this many trees of this size. Kind of do a graphical, because that's what they would need to determine if that's adequate. They can't tell you if that's adequate based on we have this much of a of a tree. So if you show that there's 300 trees along there in their whatever size, they can consider that versus replanting of new trees. If it's just a general, there's trees in here, then most likely, we're going to say, foot trees in there, we know what's going to be. So that's the thing, you have to demonstrate that to the planning commission.
And the applicant needs to demonstrate on this landscape plan, if there are trees there, which ones will be kept, which ones will not be kept going forward. So these have to be not the adjacent properties' trees, but the ones that are sited on their site. This is a review of their parcel.
Chair, that was my, that was, I may have not stated it correctly, that was my concern. How long are these trees, how long have they been there, are they mature, are they are they beyond their maturity, are they dying? You know, three years from now, they may not even be alive anymore. Those are the type of things that I have questions about, and hopefully that will. Alex's and Cory's explanation of the actual code will codify that.
Well, Cory had mentioned, too, that some of that area is going to need to be removed. Right, as far as the excavation and the. Back of the air. We'll have to see what's left.
Is that density adequate in the winter, is it adequate in the summer? You got to understand that we're trying to protect the residential, we know there's going to be residential homes to the west side of your site. It could be there pretty quick, I think.
It looks like it's happening right now for a house, so yeah.
He's over there.
So you'll you'll get a copy of the minutes, and it'll have everything outlined in there, and then we're also on YouTube, so you could play it back and listen to it. All right, any anything from the board? All right, thank you very much. Okay, any new business? No. Okay, old business, review, update, master plan. We missed you last time, Alex.
I missed you guys.
Thank you.
Ma'am, chair. I see Sal's here and me at a packet in front of us, is this something that's going to be in the board discussion, or?
I don't.
Is it something that we?
I did not, I did not see it on the agenda.
I was trying to eliminate and having to sit through the.
Okay.
Sit through the master plan stuff. Oh, me again?
Yes.
Just to be sure if you guys were right on that, so. Meeting once again, so master plan, I I just want to pick off what we left off from December meeting, unfortunately, it was still during January, couldn't attend the meeting. So essentially, we did receive all that information regarding my comments about the master plan and my memo to you. So I'm going to open this up real quick.
We all are.
This is your email on January 9th, we're going back to. Oh, here we are, January, gosh, in February, right?
Okay, so as my memo outlined to you guys, and I'll just throw that up on the screen if you don't have your hard copies from last time around. You know, we've we've, I did provide you guys that you had a future land use map from 2018. We have the existing land land use map from 2018. I provided you guys a draft existing land use map for 2024. And also drafted, the draft zoning zoning plan chart, so with that being said, there are a few things to discuss. And that is, as part of of the master plan update, we have identified current conditions, which includes. which include demographic, survey results, natural features. However, there still needs to, to complete existing land use. Now that the majority of the current conditions have been collected and reviewed, the next steps for the master plan update is to determine the direction of the township master plan based on the direction of the planning commission. So, that's for you guys to decide. We have begun drafting our goals and objectives and tasks. We need to complete future land use and zoning plans. As a reminder, future land use map and zoning plans are both state-refered items for a master plan update. Master, the master plan is the guiding future vision of the community. And the zoning ordinance is the method of carrying out that vision with a legally binding process. As part of the current conditions, the draft of existing land use map, which is based on current tax classifications from the excessors office, leverages the same method used if you had access to your GIS files. So, this is a reminder, Lapeer County GIS is down for the foreseeable futures for, for, you know, unseen circumstances due to the death of a staff member. So, it highlights how each parcel is currently used. So, based on information, the planning commission has observed that the current parcels, which are zoned as agricultural residential, are not used for that purpose based on the tax classification. For this reason, uh, the number of yellow, single-family uses displayed throughout the map, property owners are not farming for actual commercial agricultural purposes, but rather using large parcels for residential use. And that's fine, they can do that, but just so you know what's really going on within your community. The map highlights this trend, what's been happening throughout the township over the past few years, which is agriculture zone land has been transitioned to primarily residential, residential use. Even if someone has their own personal farm, so we're, we're talking, we're not talking about, you know, your garden, which I have, and most of us have, it's actual farming purposes. I don't, I want to make it clear that I'm not proposing any real changes to agriculture residential to single-family in the future land use map. I just want you to understand that, that map looked the way it does is because that's what's really going on out there in your community. In developing a 2024 future land use map of what you guys want going forward, the planning commission had suggested during the last meeting, this is in December, um, to using the 202018 future land use map as the base, along with other rezoned parcels over the past few years. In developing a 2024 future land use map and zoning plan, the draft zoning plan chart, which I provided to you, I'll bring it up shortly, provides a summary of the relationship between the current zoning districts and future land use classifications in the master plan. Well, you'll notice that the current zoning classifications, based on your current zoning ordinance, do not correspond to your 2028 future land use map. There's definitely a discretion, a difference between that. And that's pretty important, because for example, there are only a handful of commercial zone properties in the township today. The future land use ma, map makes no distinction if it's C1, C2, or C3. This is, this will be problematic and difficult to defend during rezonings if the township is challenged for its zoning practices. I know that a goal of the current planning commission has been focused on correcting items and developing best practices as we move forward. And that's what every planning commission intends to do. If there is any issue between a shopping mall or a doctor's office, this is managed by your table of uses and your table of use requirements that set, um, set standards for each use. The planning commission needs to complete the future land use map and zoning plan to finalize the master plan. My suggestion is to minimize the number of zoning districts in the future land use map and the zoning plan. The zoning plan will indicate recommendations for any amendments to the zoning ordinance. This is just regular business, in my opinion. Uh, there is no need for three commercial classifications uh, for a community that has a handful of commercial uses. The planning commission may be concerned that this will create a legal non-conforming use uh, if it amends the zoning ordinance. As a reminder, your table of uses and table of use requirements addresses those uses entirely. Lastly, please provide, I've also provided a copy to Ida, that's, I'm just reading my email from last time. So, really, I'm sure you guys read it already, and I just rewrote it for you to make sense of it all, because it's kind of, it's hard to just paraphrase and make it really tight. You know, if someone's had a C1, or C2, or C3, there's no difference on your map. You cannot say, well, we don't want a C3 there. It, it actually, it's completely irrelevant, because your table of uses will tell you what's required in there. Essentially, it would supersede it, it just, it's an unnecessary step. It's a, it's a layover from whatever practice may have occurred, for whatever reason. But I, I just don't see it to be something necessary. You have your residential, you have your ag, single-family, you have commercial, and you have industrial. And your table of uses, your map will tell you where those things can occur. Your table of uses and your zoning ordinance will tell you what they could do and what's required of them. Whether they need to have X amount of setbacks, whether they have to have X amount of parking for those types of uses. It just kind of simplifies things for a community that doesn't need to have overly sophisticated, or, not even sophisticated, I would say complicated measures and steps. So, I think that's something for you guys to decide, that's just my, uh, professional advice for you guys to take. I'm open to any comments or questions about that. And I can bring up the additional items that were provided to you for January in that meeting. I think what I had here was your zoning plan here. I could try shrink it so it all fits on one size. It's a little green, isn't it? I can't even see it from here, so I'm sure you guys can't see it from there at all, but, um, essentially, I've shown you up here in the top part what you have, and here's essentially what my proposal would be for that. Because your table of uses determine how much acreage you need and all those types of items, so, um, I guess the simplest way I could put it is to put it in writing for you guys to read it, because it's a lot to just say, and just conversing with you and, and not getting it all out right.
Any questions for Alex, comments?
So, Alex, you lead them, go circle back to the ordinance and look at the table of uses?
So.
And, and see what has to be adjusted in that table.
So, when you update your master plan, and that's the thing, is you always do your master plan first, like I've talked about before, and I'm just repeating myself, and then you update your zoning ordinance. You don't want to update your zoning ordinance and then update your master plan, that's just, the courage for the horse, right?
Right.
So, if you're leading the vision, it's a vision document of what you want your community to be. It's very clear from your public input, goals, objectives, people enjoy all that. They like it the way it is. There's no real need to make any necessary changes based on demographics, based on market demands, based on community input, or, you know, which is all provided for the planning commission, which is, you're the governing body to make this decision, to recommend up to the township board. Um, and so, yes, in that process, it's customary in general practice and a best practice that if you do see something, like I've indicated here for you guys, that you would make a recommendation, along with your master plan, that you have things that you think would be appropriate to amend to your zoning ordinance. Um, and this is pretty straightforward. I'm not, I'm not saying that you guys need to make a decision at this very moment. I can work on drafting up, um, that future land use map, um, based on some of my thoughts, along with the items that Ida provided me in an email, and she mailed in some of that stuff, so we could, we can, I can draft up that future land use map, um, for you guys to review and kind of see if that's the direction, um, you guys will be able to work with. Like I said, I'll, I'll bring up some of the other items that I discussed. This is your existing land use map from 2018. This is your 2018 future land use map. Obviously, the difference of the commercial, commercial uses there. You have on a free grant on the plan, I'm sorry. You have your existing, your, well, draft, um, existing land use map. As you can see, there's a lot more yellow as, as opposed to what was a few, a few years ago, right? As well as, uh, reference back to section 8.8 of your dimensional requirements. Like I said, a lot of those things, um, could be all just one use, and for the most part, your table of uses, which I do have up right here as well. Table of, uses and table of use requirements, which are section, uh, 8.5. You, you know what are permitted, and what are special land uses, and what districts. Uh, this would be a real easy tax amendment, I mean, this would be just a couple hours. Get it done, provide you guys, future, this is just for consideration. As well as your table of uses, which are, if in the event that someone wants to come before you and have, it's fine, it's a different example. Sorry, my, oh, you know, this gives you headache. So, a restaurant borrower club. We have a definition for that, so another thing too is, you need to have definitions in here. I don't know how that happened, you don't have definitions for uses. A commercial establishment where food and beverages are prepared, served, consumed primarily when the principal, uh, within the principal building, but not having dancing floor or show, smoking activity, stuff like that. So, what do you have in here, design parking requirements? One parking space for each 100 square feet of floor area. One space for each, uh, two persons allowed within, uh, maximum occupancy, and whichever is greater. So, you have, you have to demonstrate their need for parking. And then, you essentially don't have a design requirement for it, I'm not sure why, but, so, your table of uses, table of use requirements does a pretty good job of making sure that you've outlined, aside from your dimensional requirements, that you have things in place to address when an issue comes up.
Thank you. So, does anyone have any questions or comments?
I just have a comment or question, I guess. What, what's changed as far as like the C1, C2, C3? Um, and I only say that because this was established pretty much by rote, by, you know, not your predecessor, but your predecessor's predecessor's predecessor. I sat through these meetings for over a year while they went line by line, page by page, and the table of uses, all the C1, C2, C3, industrial, Doug, Scott Crey, Doug Piggott, they went through that whole deal, it seems like this is all kind of changing.
You're right, so I think, um, it's, it's just something that, uh, having maybe a different perspective than our predecessors, perhaps different experience, education, certifications, you know, these all things kind of matter. So, yeah, no, I know, I know, I know, I know, I don't know if I explained, but it's a good point, you have a good, it's a good, you know, statement, really. Um, I mean, it's, it's something for you guys to review. I mean, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Um, I, I just, I mean, there's communities that are, have 60,000 people, maybe have two commercial districts. You have three, you have a handful of uses. There's no way of defending which, which is which, I mean, there just isn't. What's a C1, C2, or C3, there's really nothing. You have some square footages and things of that nature, but really, I mean, when the rubber hits the road, you refer back to your table of uses or where that can be, and your table of use requirements, that's really where that sits at. So, um, you know, these are not heavy, crazy changes, it's just removing R2B, single-family, um, or really just combining R1A, 30,000 square feet, and R1B at 20,000, and just saying 20,000 for both and going up, so you don't have to have much more than that. So, you met your threshold, that's already out there, you're not creating non-conformities. The other thing was to remove C2 and C3, I mean, you have local commercial, commercial office, and then you have C2, which is planned shopping centers, and then C3, which is general commercial. Regardless of whatever applicant comes before you, five acres, 1,500 acres, so on and so forth, your table of uses really determines the real things you want to get at, right? So, um,
It's, but that's a, that's a zoning limitation, right? So, when someone comes in there, they are surrounded by industri, or surrounded by residential, for instance.
Sure.
We would rezone that to C1, right?
But you don't have anything C1, or C2, or C3 in your maps. There's no determination of what's a C1, C2 in your existing, and there's nothing in your future land use map. So, my point is that you have it, but it, there's no correlation to the maps. Whoever reviewed that then completely missed. So, I'm trying to correct something for you, because I know you guys are very focused on best practices. So, maybe that was brought up then, and I can't speak for it, but meeting notes, whatever may occur, but then I said, that's all right, we're fine with that, we'll just keep it as, okay, you just keep it as, and then keep moving on. So, this is something I picked up on, that they don't correlate to one another, not speaking to one. So, in the event that, you know, with my mind and.
So, so, on the future land use map, if it's called out as commercial, that would encompass C1, C2, C3.
Right, but then how do you determine C1, C2, C3? There's nothing to determine it. So, if someone's going to challenge you in court based on your zoning practice, you have nothing to defend yourselves. So, if you have commercial, you should have, say, it needs to have either 15,000, 12,000, or, I'm sorry, 12,000 professional office, 15, 12, five acres, or, or five. But if you go to, if you go to your table of uses and look up shopping districts, I'll just type it in real quick. The next one down, so you have your dimensional requirements in 8.8. All right, let's move down. Thing is, what'd be useful is this, let's set up where the tabs actually function. So, if I want to do a section, it jumps into a section. So, that's something we do for all of our clients. So, like, you have shopping districts here, your definition, your parking requirements, and your design standards need to say that. Someone wants to come in and do a shopping center, your design, your design requirements on your table of uses should say it needs to be five acres. If someone wants to come in and do a doctor's office, you need to say, you need to have 10,000 square feet, or 15,000 square feet. So, we're hyper-linking back and forth, we're just, we're, we're, which one trumps the other, is my point. So, when you, if you do get challenged and you denied somebody based on one of those standards, which one is it? So, I'm trying to really mitigate you guys from having something that comes down the road, because you're not, you're not sure who's gonna come through the front door and apply for what. In your zoning ordinance, it needs to be updated regularly. Like, I know Dennis brought up, we're not gonna talk about it now, but just solar. When I started practicing 20 years ago, who in the world knew solar was gonna be an issue? Now it's everywhere. And so is wind turbines and all those other things, so, and, you know, electric charging stations. As stewards of the community, the planning commission, you're responsible for being up to date. Like, whatever worked for you then may not work for you now. So, I'm bringing these things up because you just need to, you know, my recommendation is to remove those things. Just because you might get challenged, it won't be, it would be very difficult to defend. I can't, I'm not a legal expert, that's beyond my scope. I, I know a little bit, but I can say that I could see this being an issue. Uh, I hope it's not ever an issue for you guys, I really don't, um, but, um.
So, if we did, if we control that by the, the table of uses, or in there, if we, if we determine a shopping plaza, it needs to be five acres.
That should be your table of use requirement.
So, if we have five acres next to residential, then it would be a permitted use to build a shopping plaza next to, uh, someone's home.
That does happen, but you still have to go through all the site plan review requirements. They'll have to have the adequate site, will have to have, like we discussed today, access routes. They have to have appropriate screening, because they're against an adjacent lesser intense use. There's all those things that are already in place, that are, that are, 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 uh, process items that the applicant would have to go through.
Last one you said, you said that adjacent is a lesser intense use.
Right, like you had. Right, like you have there, you already, like we talked with the applicant here. They have an industrial use, next to a less intense agricultural residential use, right? So there's going to have to be all that screening in place. So...
Do you want to add it to a special land use rather than a permitted use?
Well, it depends on your table of use requirement.
Well, that's what we would update.
Right, well, your table of use, let's say, for instance, here...
Even at special, even at special land, even at special land use, is that something that we want to see is, you know, the family farm and home shopping plaza next to your house?
We might be digressing too much, but I think it's just, it is a good question, though. So an example I could show around to a lot of communities is someone comes in in a commercial district, they can apply for a restaurant, wonderful. They want to put a drive-through. Your drive-through is a special land use in your table of uses, and so they have to have design requirements for that. Okay, they can do that, they can apply for it in your district. So they go through the site plan review, they meet all the dimensional requirements of that. But drive-throughs trigger a special land use. And it just happens though that that drive-through happens to be, that commercial drive-through activity happens to be next door to a school. That school lets out twice a day, these kids are running around everywhere. You have your dimensional requirements that you review under site plan review of where it can be, setbacks, all the screening, all the things, all the control items you have. When you have a special land use, in this case here, you have to therefore review it as a qualitative item. Quantitatively, the dimensionals and the qualitative, and that's the discretion of the planning commission. Is this going to be a danger to the public health, safety, and welfare? There's a lot of traffic, and there's cars going in and out, and it's very automotive dependent which drive-throughs are. There is a chance that this may not be, for a lot of factor reasons, that a drive-through commercial operation that would be permitted, but under special land use, is detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community because it's next to a school. That'd be up for the planning commission to determine. So you do have things in place that have been improved, your best practices, your table of uses, your table of use requirements. My issue is that your existing land use is quite accurate based on our research. Your future land use map is, doesn't really need to change very much at all. My issue is that your, as I'm talking so much here, I'm laughing about that too, is that your district requirements, land uses, don't match up with what you got. So I think that's the thing, is we would have to, you would make a recommendation, after you've adopted your master plan, to the township board, that the planning commission should make amendments to its zoning ordinance. And that is something that happens regularly when you update master plans and zoning ordinances.
For the table here as well, the R1A and R1B, we discussed last time, and I thought a lot of us were in agreement, that we wanted to do the largest size to keep everything, the lots larger and everything. And I thought we discussed eliminating R1B, and then taking R1A and increasing the width to 165. It says 120. Yeah.
That's the current A residential, but we talked about stretching it both.
About, yeah, trying to increase if we could.
I see, I mean, the 165, is that, where's that number coming from?
That's A residential.
The A residential.
Oh, lot width.
So that would be a zoning ordinance item.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, that, we could discuss that then. But for the purposes of the master plan, a zoning plan that needs to be developed, that's a legal requirement. And so that table that I just provided you there of what your zoning plan looks like, that pretty much is just a one-pager, summarizes the districts with a little bit of language behind it of what's going on here. So that's, for the purposes of the master plan, we have to develop a zoning plan. So that's the reason why I bring that up. In doing so, we could look into, as you just noted, the lot width, the frontage, all that sort of stuff, what you want. My only thing is, is just being cognizant of creating non-conformities, right? That's the only thing, is you want to, you know, there would be a legal non-conformity, and they continue to operate, particularly residential, as long as they're not expanding a non-conformity. I know you guys are perhaps familiar with that. But just being cognizant that we're not creating, you know, without, or in the future, that's kind of unreasonable, if you will. Just making you aware of that, so...
Other comments?
Just one thing, it's not related to zoning, but looking at the elimination of those, which a lot of communities have done, exactly what Alex is talking about, kind of condense things down. But if you look at the R1A and R1B, this has been something, and Alma really hasn't came across this, because there's very few 30,000, I don't know if there's any 20,000 square foot lots in the township. Because the health department with well-insept, it requires basically a minimum of one acre. What you see a lot of is, just say, R1A or an R1, and you have a one acre minimum, unless there's water and sewer, that you can create it however small you want to do it. That's for the same zoning designation, the only caveat is you have water and sewer. There isn't any water sewer available, Alma, but there may be. That's just, and I'm not speaking to any of the master plan zoning, but just since this was up, if it comes up again, I'll probably forget.
Thank you.
I work in other communities where we see that, and 30,000 square feet sounds great to me when we develop land, we can't get it. You never can get it even if you have it because we're well-insept. Water and sewer, I think 30,000 is, you know, I'd love to see half of that, just as a developer. But you have a lot more options when you have that. But I can't speak to any place in the township right now that has 20,000 square foot lots. I mean, there might be some that were planted a long time ago, but just as a practical sense of it.
That's what I was kind of looking forward to, so...
All right. All right, sounds good. Any, okay, so we'll move on. Where do you have?
So where are we, Alex, as far as wrapping this master plan up?
Beyond the point of return.
Okay, good, so we have, do we have a public notice of plan?
No, 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 we're not there yet. We have to go, we were a couple of meetings away. Shorter, better than more. I think we're two maybe meetings away. I'm going to bring this back to you guys, if there's any revisions, then you guys can prepare for a meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so any reports, anything else? All right. Cory?
Engineering, there's really not much, just to bring up a couple of quick things. I do all the township planning commission review on the superior contracting Asbo plan. We did provide that, I think, three weeks ago. The Asbo plan for superior contracting. So I did have some review on it, but it's going to be, it does show everything there. So I'm just kind of trying to summarize changes with, because with that project, kind of like Smokehouse there, it kind of went through some approvals and variances and different things, so I'm trying to align them all together before I bring it to you. We'll have that next month. The only other thing, if you're, I'm sure you're aware by now, but it's been a while since I've been here, Barter Homes out there in Pine Crest behind Blake's, they started this fall. When the weather changed immediately, they basically stopped, they had some ditching and some piping. They are slated to start up again when the season starts here in the spring. That's my understanding. And then the other thing, just for somebody that are aware, the plan that you had submitted from South, that is something that we did the engineering on. We did get okay through the township, it's a site condominium on Kitter Road. It's just like the one that we did on Tub Springs. The reason we can't do that, we got approval to, there's no engineering. It's just a straight split up of the property without any roads, any drainage, stuff like that. So that's what, what's that? Was that on Holland? Yeah, it's at Tub Springs, it's Holland, yeah, north of Tub Springs. So it's the same idea, and that's just something we had presented. And that's the only instance where you can see that we can do something that will be presented to township because it's strictly survey, non-engineering work. And we did get approval to do that ahead of time through the township. Otherwise, this is only the second one, I think we've done it that way.
Thank you. All right, Tracy, zoning board?
There's nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Ida?
Okay, well, for next month, I have possibly to be charged, but I don't have to get everything into the chopstick by the 28th. I think it's Cory and Alex two weeks to review it. Make sure that they address their reviews. I have Shango fireworks over there at Combe Heights, and you have the communication tower. And you now have Kitter Road condo. So these may be intended to be a part of the review.
Thank you. Planning Commission, general comments? Solar Farms, wind energy review? Were we discussing that?
I don't know, I guess we were supposed to stand down.
All right.
But I think it's, I think it's still a weak area in our ordinance.
All right.
I understand that it's state law, but you know that something up there to their ordinance and our ordinance is extremely weak. So I don't know where the language must go, and the attorney has to advise us, but nothing until the law's understood. And, but the law covers 10 megawatts and larger.
Where did that direction come through?
Your attorney.
But where did that direction come through?
Paul Bowman talked to the attorney when I raised the question about discussing it here. And they said, "Hold off on anything until the law gets clarified or whatever," I don't know. Just being clear on the path of communication. Yeah, okay. You know what I'm getting at.
All right. So we are going to postpone our discussion on that, but we do have... Do you have, do you want to discuss for the next, oh, it's for the next meeting. Your packet, nevermind. All right, I guess we are all set. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Okay. 8:43 PM. Can you turn the camera on?